Um, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, and all, everyone in between, welcome to It Takes a Village where we sit down with candidates from all over the country to discuss a wide range of issues brought by you, the viewer. I am your charming and furious host, Politico Jess, and I'm not going anywhere. Tonight, our guest comes to us from the great state of Washington, running for city council. Please give a warm and amazing welcome to the incomparable Riley Reed for Covington. Yay, Riley. If you have any questions for the candidate, please request up. But before we do, I like to do like a little icebreaker, if you will. And I know I hate those things too, but you know, here we are. So I talk a lot about the straw that breaks the camel's back, right? We aren't getting hit with straws right now. We are getting hit with actual camel, the whole damn camel. We're getting smacked in the face with the whole damn camel all the damn time. So tell me, what was the camel that broke your back that inspired you to run for city council?
You know, it's funny because I don't think there was necessarily a straw that broke my back. I am just passionate about my community. I've lived in Covington my entire life. And I moved in with my boyfriend in the house next to my parents. And so now I've realized I'm not going anywhere and I can have a bigger impact than just volunteering on a commission. So I already kind of knew I was going to run for city council and was figuring out when. I will say the straw that broke my back that made me pull the trigger for a run this time around was Donald Trump being elected for a second term. That next morning, I would say night because I knew when I went to bed, what was gonna be the next morning. But when I woke up the next morning and saw that Donald Trump was elected as president once again, it was such a defeating feeling. The first time it happened, I was bawling the entire night. And this time I didn't shed a tear. I just wanted to pull the trigger and run for council and do something locally that gave me some form of control over the situation that's so beyond my control. So kind of a long-winded answer, but that is my story.
That is, that checks out. You'd be surprised how many people answer in exactly the same way.
Right.
You know, they weren't motivated until... And a lot of people who have that have pattern recognition, right? Like we can, we can see, we can, we have eyes, we can see things. So yes, awesome. So can you give our amazing audience, our village people, if you will, working title only, can you give them a little synopsis of who you are and what you're running for?
Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Riley Reed. I'm 27 years old. I'm a Democrat, running for city council in a small town called Covington, Washington. My background is I actually grew up in Covington. I moved once and then now I live in the same neighborhood I grew up in, which is incredible due to my boyfriend buying a house. But my professional background is I got my undergrad in marketing and entrepreneurship, my bachelor's degree. So I had to start a small business in order to graduate. It was my capstone project. And I think that empowered me to do things that I've never done before, like run a campaign, right? So I graduated that program. It was fantastic. And then I went beyond to get my degree in, my MBA, my degree in, my master's degree in business administration. I'm so sorry. My cat is meowing in the background and it is distracting. He's upset because I've locked him out of a room that has food.
Oh, no. How dare you.
I'm very rude like that. Yeah, I feed him four times a day, but somehow it's not enough sometimes. Anywho, got my master's degree, became a manager at 22 in the trucking industry. So I'm very, very familiar with trying to lead in a place that people may not want you to be leading. Trying to tell older men, older gentlemen, what to do when you're 22 and first time manager. It was a challenge, to say the least. So I'm used to being uncomfortable, being the youngest in the room and maybe not having all the knowledge of everyone else in the room. But I think that it's a common saying that if you're not the smartest person in the room, or if you are the smartest person in the room, you're in the wrong room, right? So I've been a manager for five years now. I had my master's degree and I started volunteering on the arts commission for our city. And I became the chair of that pretty quickly and led that group where we would do different art installs. We had a small budget where we could hire local artists. And it was very fun. I loved being a part of that group. And I may rejoin if I don't win, but I don't like saying that very often. When I win, I won't be allowed to be on a commission. So the next step, yeah, right? Exactly. So the next step is getting on city council. I'm gonna have influence over a lot more than just art. And I'm just really excited for this opportunity and to see what happens this November.
Are you running, you have an opponent, I'm assuming?
Oh, yeah, I do. So my opponent has been on the council for 12 years now. So it's an incumbent. There was no primary because it's just me and this incumbent running against each other. So we don't need to determine a top two in a primary when there's only two, right? So I'm flying completely blind on whether or not people are perceiving me as a good option, how many votes I would get, anything like that. I have no idea, but the general election ballots are gonna be out in three and a half weeks. And then people have two weeks to vote and I'll find out if I am elected or not.
That's, man, that's kind of a quick turnaround time. Susu asks, what area of Washington state is Covington in?
Yeah, Covington's closest, like bigger city is Kent, Washington. It actually used to be a part of Kent until it grew. About 30 years ago, we became our own city. There's 22,000 people in this city. So when I say small city, it's kind of relative because some people in my comment section have like 2,000 people. I'm like, whoa, that is tiny. No, we, we have a little bit more going on in Covington than that, but yeah.
And Kent is like central, right?
Not everybody knows about it. Kent is below Seattle, 30 minutes south of Seattle.
South of Seattle, okay, got it.
Yeah, I work in Seattle. I go to Seattle three days a week, actually.
Oh, I miss Seattle. So just in case anybody in here has ever been to Washington or around Washington, there is a road north of Seattle called Chuckanut Drive. Okay? If you've never taken Chuckanut Drive, Riley, I would highly suggest that you do. It is some of the most...
Chuckanut Drive?
Chuckanut Drive. It is some of the most beautiful, it is some of the most gorgeous stretch of road in the country, in my humble opinion. And I've never, you know, I don't get out much, but it is absolutely gorgeous. There's like the islands off to the side. You get into, it ends at Bellingham Bay in Fairhaven in Bellingham. So it is just the most beautiful scenic route. Definitely worth the drive if you ever want to take a day trip just up the coast. Highly recommended. Anyway, tangent. Just a reminder to the village people in the chat, working title only. If you have a question for Ms. Riley, please request up. We would love to take your questions. No question is off the table. We talked earlier about comfort food, Happy Meals, McDonald's cheeseburgers. That is, that is fabulous. I am, I'm also a fan. So I would like to ask you, there are just a million issues that people are being hit with on a daily basis. And it is almost impossible to focus on just one thing at any given moment. What is the one thing that you feel like should be front and center as we're entering our midterm elections?
Uh, women's rights. Right now, I'm actually getting more and more concerned about women's rights. So there are some whispers when it, when it comes to bigger politics. I honestly, I try not to focus on it as much as I do my, my election because again, focusing on what I can control and what I can change right now. But there are whispers about, you know, Project 2025. And in there, the hope is to take control away from women, such as ability to get credit or credit cards, like it's 1970 all over again. And I'm the breadwinner in my reputation shift. So that would make me very upset. But women's rights falls under so many different categories. Like the right to choose is, is super important. I don't like calling it like pro-choice necessarily because it puts you in a box. But I believe that pro-choice and pro-life are the same thing if you're looking at it scientifically and you're looking at all these different scenarios of women and fetuses dying because we don't have active care in different states.
Healthcare.
Healthcare. Yes, healthcare.
It's healthcare.
A hundred percent. I've been to Planned Parenthood and I probably will go again, not for an abortion. But if it was for an abortion, I'd be willing to say so. They have basic healthcare at Planned Parenthood that can really help when you don't have the best insurance or aren't on insurance for whatever personal reason that is. We're losing lives because of the fight against abortion care, which is healthcare.
Yep, 1,000%, as I like to say. Caress asks, what is the number one challenge that you're facing right now in your election?
Well, as I'm trying to knock an incumbent off their seat, 12 years on council is, you know, quite an investment. This person obviously cares about our community. So the challenge for me is getting the word out there enough and being visible enough to get elected. So ways to do that signage, super important. So I keep raising little bits of money and then being able to buy more signs. And unfortunately, when you buy in bulk, you get a better deal. So I'm kind of working against myself, but every day I don't have signage out, you know, the less that value you get out of that purchase too. So it's like this whole conundrum, right? So I'm trying to get signage out there, boots on the ground, knocking on doors and meeting people or going to events. And it feels like there's an event every single day. So how do I balance that with my work? With, I'm still a board member in Seattle for the Propeller Club in Seattle. So I have volunteer work to do. And then I have a relationship, a family. When do I go to the gym, you know? All of that. It's been really rough, but the number one challenge is just name recognition and trying to get people to realize that I'm out here only for the best for the, for the city. You know, I want what is best for the city. And I hope that people agree with me that the best for the city is supporting our youth and supporting elderly and providing more community care resources.
Susu asks, what are some issues you have in Covington that your opponent might focus on?
Well, it's interesting. I sat down with our chief of police at the beginning of my campaign because safety is a number one priority for our citizens. And youth violence and shoplifting is his number one concern. And my opponent, as they, they are Republican and they're the mindset of when somebody does something wrong, they get arrested, they go through the system, all of that, right? My position on youth violence and addressing this issue is providing services and programs so that our youth feel connected to our city. So that our youth have other opportunities other than youth violence or graffiti or whatever it is, right? We want to instill pride into these people. Because the system right now, when you, when you get booked into jail, statistically, you're 75% chance that you're gonna be back in this, in jail at some point in your life. So that obviously doesn't work. And I believe my opponent's perspective on that is go through the system. My perspective is let's do proactive care. Let's find other creative ways that we can engage with this group of people, which is young teens. It's one of the reasons why I'm doing a public speaking event at a high school, one of our local high schools. I'm trying to get in contact with the other one, but I haven't gotten through quite yet. But I'm gonna go to the high school, I'm gonna tell them about my experience, tell them ways that they can get involved and ask them, how can I support you? Because our council hasn't done that yet. Ask what do they specifically want? Let alone recognize the issue that the youth are, especially the teen demographic, are forgotten.
I think that is such a brilliant answer. Can I just, can I just reflect on that for a moment? Because there are so many kids out there who are just lost in the woodwork. They just, they're, they don't have a place to go. They don't have any sort of connection to their communities. And I feel like if they had some sort of connection to their community, that, that not only would they grow up to be more involved in their own local politics and have, they just have better outcomes, you know?
Absolutely. Talking in my comment section on one of my videos was talking about third, third spaces, the third places. I forget how they said it, but it's so important to not just have school, home, school, home. You need to have a third place, that you can have a creative outlet, outlet, a physical outlet, like the gym, something where you're, you're not just in these two places every single day and that's it. A third place can mean the difference for people's mental health. And our teens deserve that, but they don't always have access to a car. So enhancing our, one, our bus safety needs to be better so people feel comfortable getting on public transportation. And then two, extending the stops to stop at our high schools. Because there aren't direct stops near our high schools. It's like a half mile, maybe a full mile walk to the nearest bus stop from our high schools. So you need to give these kids options to get out there and explore and enjoy the beautiful parks and programs that we have thus far. And then I think tailoring some of those to the teen demographic would be important. We have meet and greets with like Elsa and Anna or whatever, you know? And that's fun for your kids under, let's say, 11 or 12. But once you get into that pre-teen, teen era, there's, there's no real activity for them. So.
So you would want to start programs like this at the like 11, 12 year old sort of age?
Yeah, around there and up. But yeah, whether that is, I mean, partnering with our local Taekwondo instructors and offering like a free night once a month that's sponsored by our city or scary movie festival instead of just, we, we have movie nights in Covington. But again, I think one of the movies was Frozen, which is funny I brought up Elsa and Anna, right? And so teens aren't gonna want to watch that. So maybe do a, a age appropriate scary movie, something that's a little bit more exciting for them. You have to kind of ride the line though, between what's appropriate, what's not for a city to provide. But teens want a little bit of oomph, a little bit of scandalous in the activity. That's how you get them, I'm gonna be honest.
That's true. I'm a big believer in... You gotta meet them where they are, you know? Like you gotta meet them where they are. And that, that falls for not just teens, it's everybody really. And I'm glad that you brought up bringing, talking to kids in their high schools because that was gonna be my next question. You are on the younger side of political, you know, I've, I've interviewed a few candidates at this point and you're definitely on the younger side. I love that you are, you are involved. But the thing that I would like to press is that the, the best messenger to get the youth involved is the youth, right? So I'm not saying that you're a youth, but I am saying that the way that you get people involved is by, by showing up. So how else would you, how else, aside from going to their high schools, what other things can you do as a younger candidate to inspire people to, to get involved?
I, I'm glad you brought that up. I alone have, I have a network of friends from growing up here, right? And they have younger siblings and I have younger siblings who have friends. I have a whole network of people that are in their twenties and teens that are not even realizing that we have opportunity to give back via our city on, on like a commission. So they're realizing and noticing, oh my gosh, this, this girl is so involved with their city. How, how can I do the same thing? So I'm an influence alone by running, which is another reason why I wanted to run now instead of 10 years from now, because I have that, I, younger demographics attention. But also I, I was a Girl Scout growing up. So I've been doing some speaking with the Girl Scouts of Western Washington. I've gone to a couple of like group Girl Scout events and reached out to them and connected with them. The thing is, is that demographic, Girl Scouts are already, they already give back to their community and already have the tools that they need. So it's not as impactful as I would like. How else? I don't know. It's really hard. I, I've gotten on TikTok for that reason, to try to connect with that demographic and Instagram. My opponent's not on TikTok or Instagram, just Facebook. And it's smart. It's a smart political strategy because the older people are traditionally the people that vote. But I'm trying to inspire that younger demographic, even if that's in their twenties. Still, they don't show up as much as the older demographic does.
Yep, and I think that, I, I tell candidates all the time, you gotta be on TikTok. That's where, that's where, that's where the young, I mean, the, the older folks are on the book of faces, but the younger people are on TikTok. And they're, they're moving to other, the other social networks also. But I mean, again, you gotta meet people where they are. Mr. Ray says, Riley, can you move to California? We need you on our city council.
If I were to move to any other state, it might be California because I have some family out there and my boyfriend's family is out there. But unfortunately, I am living in the house next to my parents and it is a dream. Every time I run out of rice or sugar or whatever it is, it's on the fence in 10 minutes. I don't think I'm moving. I love it here in Covington.
That's fair, that's fair. I don't think I would move either. Be like, this is great. I don't feel like cooking tonight. Mom, what are you making?
Absolutely. I can pop over there anytime. I have family dinner with her every Sunday. Me and my boyfriend go over and she makes us a lovely meal. It's...
I love that for you.
Thinking about the future, right? Thinking about a family, which both me and my partner want, we want to adopt actually. And how amazing would it be to be right next to the grandparents when you have those ones? I just, it's game changer for sure. It takes a village to raise children. So I'm using your terminology.
Hey, it takes a village to do damn near anything in this country at this point. So yes, and, and the, the, the whole, like having community when you're raising your children is so incredibly important. So I, yeah, no, I wouldn't give that up for, for anything. I'm so super jealous.
Sorry, California.
I know, right? It's so nice out there. Hey Dexter, thank you so much for joining us. Did you have a question for Riley? Your mic is muted. I don't know if you can hear me.
Hi, yes, sorry.
Hi.
I didn't realize I was muted.
No, you're fine, you're fine, you're good.
Yeah, I like, ironically, I did not prepare a question today. And I, I just woke up and I was like, oh, oh no. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really simple one today. And we still have the follow-up.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so number one, what is the smallest, easiest thing that you would do once elected to make life better for your people?
Oh my goodness. You said that was an easy one?
Small, small, easy. But you, you don't want to know what I asked the rest of these guys when, on a Sunday.
The smallest, easiest thing is going to be continuing to push, like on social media, the events that are happening. A lot of the events that I've been posting on TikTok are after the fact. And one of the most comment, comments I get is, oh, I wish I knew this was going on. Oh, I missed this event, right? So proactively communicating with the community on what is available to them. I think that's a small, easy thing I could do on a daily basis.
That, that sounds fantastic, like giving people the information that they need to organize. Fantastic. Follow-up question, what's the biggest?
Yeah, so the biggest thing I can think of right now, there's two, but I'm gonna go with one. We don't have a dedicated community center in Covington. We have a public library, which is funded through the King County Library System. But we don't have like a dedicated area that we can do programs for, for people. And the library's constantly booked. We have 180,000 people visit in 2024. Very busy library, there is a huge demand. So the city is already trying to do a community center. They want it to include shopping and a pool and a gym and all this luxury items, right? Which are just the dollar signs go up and up and up and up. And we don't want to raise taxes on our people for a pool. I, I think there are other, other things that, that matter that maybe we could raise taxes for, but a pool doesn't sound like it to me. We already have one actually. So we need an interim community center while we're getting that big dream that could take 20 years. We need something now for our city. And some ideas that have been thrown around are like partnering with people who have, already have a facility, like partnering with a high school and saying, hey, can we use a couple of your rooms or one of your portables for a community center for different activities? But filling that gap, I think, it's just such a question mark. There's so many ways you can go about it and there, there's so many people that could benefit from it.
Thank you so much. And I, I some, I, so I'm not American and I frequently have this experience where, where there are things I just do not think about, like every area not having a pool because it's not as important for you guys to learn to swim as it is here. Most of our people live within 30 minutes of the ocean.
That's true.
So, yeah, yeah, cool. Loved it. Thank you so much. Good luck with yours.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the questions.
Thank you Dex.
The disconnect button has moved.
I got you, don't worry. No worries, no worries.
I'm gonna let my cat in. He needs to have his dinner.
He's like, I'm hungry mama. Feared mercy ma. Oh, George, what a great name for a cat. Okay, Bacon, I'm gonna let you up now for, to ask your question. This is our friend Bacon. Hi Bacon.
I'm gonna open my camera. Hi, I'm gonna introduce myself real quick. I'm 46, Kamala Harris, Hohem, California. I'm, I was an immigrant and a disabled person as well. And I have three questions, by the way, for you. Number one, you're, you're writing for a city council? Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. City council, what are your proposals that will benefit for your city, for immigrants that wanting to better, better their lives? And what protection are you willing to suggest to our, to your congressman and all those on, on top?
Right, well, at our city level, we aren't able to pass like laws. We're able to pass something called an ordinance. So we can, we can pass an ordinance that basically says employers and businesses are not allowed to open their doors to ICE. I mean, you could pass something like that. It would be very radical, conceived as, like perceived as radical by our community because I live in kind of a purple city, I'm gonna be honest. But the thing is, is if I'm elected on the council, I will be taking a seat from someone who is Republican. These are nonpartisan seats and a majority of what we do is nonpartisan decision-making. Everyone wants safe streets. Everyone wants non-congested streets and everybody wants community events. So those are baseline, those are gonna continue to be, to be prioritized in our, in our city. But I would definitely be open to passing something along those lines that make immigrants feel safer in our city. I would love to personally. And it would be much more possible if I flipped the seat.
And I hope that you will and I will, if I was there, I would gonna help you out no matter what. And I'm gonna say, and my second question is, as a disabled person, do you agree that we need equality? equality and, uh, equality to disabled community to to be able to function as normal being like, for example, uh, in a work environment and, um, in society? Do you think we need to have equality and, um, equality in 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 the city?
Yeah, um, one hundred percent. Um, and I love that you share with me openly that you have a disability. Um, I'd like to do the same for you and share that I also have a disability. I have a neurological condition that's, uh, degenerative over time, but my hands shake constantly because of it. Um, I don't have very good balance. I fall down the stairs all the time. And as I get older, I will lose the ability, potentially lose the ability to walk on my own. And, um, also do the small things like fasten a button on a shirt, zip up my jeans. Um, so I constantly look for, um, disabled parking when I'm touring parks and taking videos and you'll see that on my page. I always point out the disability parking. And I'm looking at sidewalk clearance. I'm looking at off-ramps in appropriate spaces, things like that. So I would be an elected disabled person by by definition. Um, so, yeah, that is a huge priority of mine. For myself and my siblings who have it as well.
Wow, I'm, well, uh, I I'm, 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 I'm lost for words and, um.
That doesn't happen very often.
We need a little bit of voice cuz we, we know that as a disabled, we we, they are building a strong imaginary wall between us and the government. And you are breaking that boundaries and I'm so, so proud.
Thank you. That that is really kind to say. I don't always, uh, you know, I feel imposter syndrome throughout this whole experience, running for council and, um, who knows what's gonna happen. I could very well be elected and it's, I'm probably gonna feel imposter sy- syndrome for quite some time. Um, but I'm just excited about the opportunity, excited about to hopefully make more people speechless and share my personal experience living with a disability while being on the council. I think it could be a really valuable thing for our city, after me.
Uh, lastly, I'm gonna say this and to everybody that is in here, just listen to me. Don't let your disability run your life. Run with your disability, with your held up high and with a freaking smile on your face. And don't let bullshit, uh, tell you something that you're not. Cuz you're worth
Speak in truth.
You're worthy, you're loved, and you're special. Thank you for your time and thank you and good luck and I hope that you will be one of the million voices that we need as a disabled queen. And I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. You're too kind.
Bacon. Awesome. Thank you so much, Bacon. All right, if anybody has any more questions now is the time to come up. We've got about, you know, another five or ten more minutes of questions and then we'll go into our activist alley session. Um, can you elaborate on what it means while we're waiting for more questions to pop up? Can you elaborate on what it means to you to be a public servant?
Yeah, um, I'm in a position right now running for council where I am already a public servant. I'm, I'm listening to people while I knock on doors and finding out things that they need. Communicating directly with the city on what those things are. Um, and anyone can be a public servant regardless of being on a city council position. Just volunteering for a day to clean up the street. Anyone can go out and do that. Um, what it means to me personally, um, I wanna give back to my city because I have four sisters, my parents, and now a niece that lives here and benefits from what Covington has done so far, and I just wanna build upon that and and create a space that just feels safe and inclusive. Um, so it it means the world to me and I come from a background of, um, community service. So it it may be just like a second nature thing to me, but I just think it's so important that everybody should take the time to go out and give back to their community. You end up receiving five times the amount in even just like happy feelings inside at the end of the day. Um, but yeah, it means a lot.
Mr. Rice says the greatest gift a public servant can give to their community is the gift of their time. And I absolutely love that. That's so great. Um, so, let's talk a little bit about fundraising because as you know, um, and I don't know how it is on a local like city council level, but nationally, big money has kind of ruined politics and decimated our government. Um, it makes it almost impossible for regular people to run for office. So how do you tackle that? And what inspirations can you provide people who are looking at Kilimanjaro public fundraising and are just paralyzed?
Yeah, you know, it is a really tough thing to do. Like, really, the way that I've tackled fundraising has been leaning on my community. Um, I'm lucky enough to have people with the resources to donate to my campaign directly. Um, and then just wisely choose the organizations that you're willing to partner with. There, there have been some people or organizations that approached me with donations and and I have to say no because I have to think about what their intentions are with giving me, um, funding. Um, one way you can do, uh, fundraisers, a really good way to do it is to partner with a nonprofit and maybe do something like a food drive where you have people come and donate food and donate to your campaign and provide value to your community while you're fundraising. Um, I did a campaign kickoff where I I got you can get organizations to donate, you know, a space and food and maybe the sound system to do this. Make it fun, make it social, provide resources for them when they come, or maybe an additional public speaker with insights. And people will donate and rally behind you. That's what I did to raise money for my campaign. But a lot of my campaign in the beginning was all just funded by myself. So I had to know financially that there was going to be some investment from me, not just all the time I spent my entire summer in my twenties, which I could be spending doing so many other amazing things. I decided to spend my time and my money on this campaign because it means that much to me. And so I always, whenever I talk to people who are interested in running for council, I say to them, know that there is a financial aspect to this. Make sure that you have the ground level to invest in yourself, in your future, and put a limit on what that investment looks like. So if that's, I can spare five hundred dollars for this campaign, that's your limit and that's what you're gonna spend on it. You just stick to it and you have respect for yourself and your own finances. And you find other ways to get creative and connect to community members and you'd be surprised. I've had some people donate amounts of money that I was not expected to receive. Uh, for me, that's like six hundred dollars. That was insane. Some one person sent to me. I was just, I was baffled. I was humbled. I I don't, I didn't know really what to do after that. And then the other thing is, when you get money from people in your community, um, I always ask for an address because legally you're supposed to report who's donated to your campaign. Take that address and write a letter. Thank you so much for donating to my campaign. Put a fifty, seventy-five cent stamp on it and send it to them because that handwritten letter with my shaky hands, very embarrassing handwriting, still can mean a lot to the people that donated to your campaign.
And that's more than what a a lot of other people are doing, you know?
Yeah.
Just saying, just saying a personal thank you is, that means, um, like, I don't know, for me, I would just be like, they wrote back, they wrote to me, oh my gosh. You know, I would have, I would have a moment. It would be, it would be amazing. Um, so that is amazing. Um, I have one more question for you. Um, and I would like to know what, aside from this moment of course, uh, what has been your favorite moment on the campaign trail so far?
Oh, my gosh. I, it would have to be the parade. Uh, Covington has a parade every year. And I sat on the back of a Porsche with the roof down and I had a sign in my hands and I was just yelling at the top of my lungs, vote for me. And people in the audience were dancing to our music or clapping or cheering. Um, and the energy just was there and I had the energy as well that day. I made sure extra cup of coffee, you know, to get and get excited. Um, that moment was euphoric. It was so fun to get out there. And you know, anyone can enter in the parade. It's free in Covington. I'm surprised more organizations don't do it because it's a fun thing. It's fun. If you have a cool car, into your car and drive through the parade, hand out dum-dums to people. It can make kids' day to get little candy. That's what I did. Hand out, handed out information, screamed my name at the top of my lungs and, um, handed out candy to the kids. It was fun.
That is amazing. So when you're running for city council, I know that, um, and just to kind of circle back on the fundraising thing, is there like a, um, minimum fund rate? Like, you have to meet a certain benchmark before you get your name on the ballot kind of a thing, or is that not something that they do for city council?
You, oh, I lost my headphone.
The story of my life.
That's so funny. Um, you don't need a, you technically don't need a dollar. Um, there is a fee to file. I think it was around a hundred and eighty dollars to file to be on the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, outside of that, you could just file a hundred eighty dollars, my name's on the ballot and see if you win. Technically, you could. Um, that's not my story at all.
You're like, that's not my journey.
It's expensive. Yeah, no, and that takes a lot of time, right? But, um, yeah, no, there's no ben- minimum other than that, uh, fee to be on the ballot, which is around two hundred dollars.
Awesome.
And you have to pay that out of your own pocket. You can't get other people to, uh, pay that for you.
Ah, that's a bummer. I mean, I guess that you know, it's, it's, it's better than like for other bit, more larger offices, you have to meet like thousands of dollar benchmarks.
Yeah.
Just, so I I love that, you know, at le- at least in Covington, um, they don't have a whole lot of obstacles. Um, to make it possible for people like you to run, so I think that that's fantastic.
Lots of paperwork, but not financially, just a hundred and eighty bucks and I was on there. I will be on it.
I'm so excited for you. That's amazing. Well, we, um, let's switch gears for a little bit. I am going to, um, ask you to to hang tight for a minute. We have this little section in our show that we do every, every time we're on. It's at seven twenty and it's called Activist Alley. I know we're a little bit early today, but I'm loving this for us. We're gonna give Caress a few more minutes. Hey babes. Um,
Hey.
We are going to learn some amazing things, um, from our dear friend Caress. You know her, you love her. She is, um, a fantastic person, um, responsible for organizing and, um, doing some fabulous activist work. So can you give us just a little bit of, you know, just a little off about what's, what's going on?
Yeah, hi. Hi, everybody in the chat. If you don't know who I am, I'm Caress Marie. I am one of the co-founders of the People's Sick Day, which is an organization that is taking a three-day economic and labor blackout to fight back against the system, to take our power back from the working class. Um, hey, hey, Naomi. Um, so yeah, so we're organizing, right? Uh, started out grassroots, started back in May, have grown a Discord to over twenty-one thousand members, Facebook group of over eight thousand members. Um, we're working with, also with local candidates such as Riley to get grassroots candidates, you know, on ballots and um, in the forefront. So that's a secondary piece of what we're, we're working on and what we, uh, focus on. Um, but our, but our main mission is to organize together and to take an economic and labor blackout. Um, as you guys can see, collective, um, community organizing around pulling our money out of the system works. We just saw it with Jimmy Kimmel, right? Jimmy Kimmel is now officially back on the air. Why? Because we pooled our resources from ABC and from Disney and we said, absolutely not. Um, and that's the way that you take your power back. When the system is starving you and the system is no longer working for you, when politicians are no longer listening to your voices, it's time to hit them in the one place that they cannot control. And that's your dollar, right? No more donations to politicians who don't serve you. No more votes to politicians who don't serve you. And we damn sure shouldn't be shopping with companies or working for companies who uplift, uh, authoritarian, uh, oligarch fascist regime. And I think that's where we are. I think we're seeing it. We've been seeing it for a while now and it just seems to continuously to compound. So that's what we're doing. That's what we're working on. We've been working really hard, uh, to convince people that this is the way to go, right? Um, we're not gonna fight and we're not gonna win. And it doesn't make sense for us to go outside and destroy our country. Um, it makes more sense for us to shut it down and take our power back in that way. So violence is never gonna be the answer. Peaceful protest and restriction is the way we go.
Can you talk more about, um, what the, uh, your, our lists of demands are?
Sure. Yeah, we have twenty-three collective demands that we put together early in, um, early into the inception of the People's Sick Day. We spoke to people and we asked, what do you wanna see, right? And we compiled a list of things from the things that people wanted to see the most to the least or to, you know, to the least important, I guess, you know, and we try to put those in a hierarchy. Obviously, the first one is not only the impeachment, but the arrest of Donald J. Trump and his entire administration, um, for acts against the US Constitution. Uh, we have watched him as he, uh, undermined due process. We have watched him as he has ignored federal courts. We have watched him as he has, uh, written hundreds of executive orders that are illegal um, and against the US Constitution and, uh, the fraud that this man has taken place, taken part in, such as um, uh, gifting frauds, right? We know he is literally using people to get donations, selling things, selling hats, selling bobbleheads, like he's, he's a scammer. He's using, um, he's using the White House as his personal piggy bank. And those things are illegal. He's taking from the tax, the taxpayers and and funneling his own pockets and the people at the top. And we're watching that, right? We know that he made cuts. There's millions and millions of dollars in cut, billions of dollars in cut. But none of those cuts are coming back to the working class. They're all going to the top. So that's some of our list of demands. Um, other things that are on the list of demands, right? Uh, caps on rent increases, minimum wage increases. Obviously, minimum wage hasn't been raised since two thousand and nine. I know places like Seattle, uh, where Riley is, right? People fought and they got their minimum wage raised, right? Because they stuck together, they stuck to the ground, they said, absolutely not. The cost of living here is out of control and you need to meet the wages. And that's why their minimum wage is as exceptional as it is in Washington. Um, but it should be like that across the country. And and I still think you're still not where you need to be at in Washington or places like New York or Illinois, you know, big cities like LA, Chicago, where people are struggling just to live, right? Fifty percent of our homeless community live on the streets with a full-time forty-eight hour, forty-hour or plus job. No one who gets up and goes to work every single day for forty-plus hours should be living on the streets, period. Um, so our basic needs need to be met. Food is a human right. Housing is a human right, right? Those are just human rights. These are not things that we should have to beg at the table for. Um, these are things that should just be given to us because we were born here, right? Because the things that they are using to build all these things come naturally from the source, right? So, um, why do you think you get to monopolize off of them at the, at the, you know, on the backs of the people?
Definitely. Do we, um, do you have any sort of, um, events that you guys are planning? Any other of, like, I know you were on the Joy Reid Show. Are there any other appearances that you've got in the works that you can share with us?
So we don't have anything scheduled. I will say that we have been reaching out nonstop to news outlets and to, um, you know, other creators to try to get the word out. Um, yes, we were featured on Joy Reid. Yes, Fox News did do a special on us to talk about us. Um, and yes, we've been in multiple magazines. Um, but we will be promoting No Kings two point O. So that'll be something that we'll be getting behind one hundred percent, um, using that. Um, you know, using the server and the people that we have, not using them, but, you know, leveraging them to, you know, make a bigger stand to organize even more. Um, so we're, we're really working on how we can campaign that, uh, and get the word out there and how we can leverage the, the group and, you know, the dynamics that we have built in order to just spread the word there and get people out. Um, those that didn't go last time because they were afraid or because, you know, they just couldn't make it. Um, you know, maybe this time we can get them out there and encourage them. And typically, we don't promote protests. But I think we're at the point now where But I think we're at the point now where we're left with vi- little choice, right? We're left with little choice. Um, and I think it is, I think protests are dangerous and um they sometime can be fruitless. Because you go out and you yell and you scream and you go home and you you achieve nothing but yelling and screaming, right? And um you don't have any demands meant, but I do, I do think that at we're at a point where they need to see our strength again. They need to see that we are just as serious now as we were back in June. Um, so, yeah, that's where we're at right now. That's what we're working on. We're also working with Electric uh Election Truth Alliance. Um, as you know what's going on with that, there are some um. Some anomalies that have been found, so we're working with them to communicate when those anomalies have been found, when the support cases have been highlighted. Uh, what the next steps are and how people can help. We just did an alert to get people to, you know, check in with a lawyer from the Electric Truth Alliance. Uh, team if they're in certain counties, they wanna, they wanna talk to people, right? They wanna see where they voted and if it was correct on the ballot. So, there's some, there's some funny business going on there, so we are trying to network in those spaces. But we we support any. Acts of resistance, honestly, any acts of resistance, um, which is what we all should be doing right now.
I think that's super, super awesome. And like, if I was wearing a hat, I'm not, but hats off to you, dear. I've I'm, I'm constantly in awe of. Of all of the things that you are doing, so um thank you so much for. For fighting and keeping, keeping up the fight and reminding everybody that it is absolutely worth it. This country is absolutely worth it. And we could all, we could all have what we need to thrive here. If we work for it and it's worth it.
Yeah, and I feel like, and we take away the division, right? We stop fighting each other for the things that are very much obsolete, right? Do you, does your paycheck change when someone's in the bed with another man because they're a man? No. Does your paycheck change when a woman decides that she doesn't wanna carry a child? No. Right? Your paychecks and your bills and your families don't change for a lot of these things that you're making a part of the issue. Um, and what we need to be focused on is, you know, bettering our economy, making sure that our kids have safe educational. Um, you know, uh places of education, making sure that our elderly have has healthcare and has care. Um, when they retire and they've served the community, making sure our veterans are taken care of after they've served our country. Um, and and making sure that people that are underserved feel equitable, feel like they are, uh, you know, have equal playing ground. Um, and investing back into our community and our infrastructure to be competitive against the global market. And I think that's where we're lost at. We're focusing on the most ridiculous things instead of keeping our eyes on the prize. Yeah.
I can tell people, yeah, I tell people all the time, the fight is not left to right. It's not left to right. It's top to bottom, everybody. Like. It's this way, not this way. So, um, so I love that you are out here doing what you do. Thank you so much for coming onto the show tonight. Um, to share your message.
Thank you, Riley.
Yeah, thank you. It's so cool to hear, hear everything that you're doing to organize. We're having No Kings protests in Covington, believe it or not. Small town, but we're we're gonna show up and we did back in um, with the April that we had the first one. It was back in, oh, it was June, yeah. I was there for that one and it was incredible, like. Two thousand people showed up in in a small town, so it was.
It proves to you they think that, you know, you're not alone, right? The the thoughts that you're thinking, that the way that you see things are going, you're not alone in that thought and there are other people who are out here thinking the same thing. And it reminds us that, you know, you're fighting for, you're fighting for those people who are out there.
Right, and I I I know what you mean by protests sometimes feels like it doesn't do much of anything. But I will say that I came home from that protest and I felt, I felt safer than I did before. I felt inspired and I felt excited about our community and proud to be in Covington and so. It it does nothing, but it also, it does something for the soul, I will say. It was really nice to see out the community.
I agree that that part of it, seeing, like I said, seeing that you do have, you know, people out there that agree with you. Um, is a big part of it. It's showing that there is, uh, there's a, there's a community. There's a community who thinks and feels the same way you feel. Um, you're not out here fighting in the, in the void or in the echoes, right? And I know.
Yeah.
A lot of what you're doing on a city level is very hard, right? Trying to figure out how that budget's gonna work and. What gets cut and what gets improved and, you know, you you got your work cut out for you and uh, and I'm gonna tell you, you're young. You you know, you gotta, you got, you gotta get with the youth, you gotta get these kids out here. And I I heard you talk about. Um, you know, talking to the kids and understanding what what they, what they need to make themselves feel a part of the community. Start that now, you know, start that now. When you go up to debates, you already have that ammunition, like, hey, I already talked to the kids.
Mm-hmm.
I already talked to them and they fuck with me, you know what I'm saying? Like. We 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 come to an agreement, this is what they need, you know what I'm saying? And this is what I'm gonna fight for, right? The kids are the future. Um, and you know, some of these teenagers are only a couple of years out from voting and you don't know where your career is gonna be in a couple of years, right? And they're gonna remember you. You were the one that brought them those programs. You were the one that made sure that they had um the feel, the sense of community. Um, brought back into them and a lot, a lot of, a lot of what we're seeing with kids not feeling like they're a part of the community or are feeling, you know, or going seeking violence or. Drama or chaos is because mom and dad's not home because they're working so much.
Yeah.
Let's be, let's be transparent. Poverty is breeding the problems. You don't want violent, disruptive children. Their parents need to be home with them more. So they can focus on them and they can spend time with them and do things with them. But if you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You don't have time to invest in your own children and that has to be a part of every single politician's mindset. It's bigger than just giving them a a third place or a third space, right? Because if home is destroyed because mom and dad's never there because they're always working, what difference does it make if you give them a third space? Right? They don't feel supported at home in that third space. It's obsolete, you know, so that's where we need to focus our energy is figuring out how mom and dad can get paid a livable wage that allows them. To to be home with family and do things, do activities with their family, make it affordable. Um, once we, once we figure out how to make it affordable for families, we'll fix a lot of the problems with the youth and we'll fix a lot of that disconnect. And if you focus your energy there, I think you got a winner, kid. I really do.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming up, Caress. I I really hope to have you back.
Oh, yeah, anytime, you know, I'm right here. You just call me, girl, and I'm on my way.
I know where to find you.
You know it, you know, it was so nice chatting with you. Thank you, everybody in the chat. Appreciate you guys so much. You guys haven't already joined the Discord, please make sure you go to the peoplesickday.com, join us, organize with us, spread the word, bring a friend. Let's get this done. Let's stand up.
Let's get her done.
Let's get her done.
Let's get her done. Awesome. Thank you so much, Caress.
You're welcome. It was nice seeing you guys.
You do. Thanks.
Alright, bye. Bye, Riley.
Okay, thank you. I cut, I cut you off, Chris. I'm so sorry. She was gonna say, bye, Riley.
Yeah.
So we are getting close to time here, folks, but before we go, Riley, if you could just tell the good folks who joined us today. How they can get involved and how they can help you with your campaign, allow me to assist if you will. I'll buy your alma.
Yeah, absolutely. The best way you can get involved is engage with any and all of my social media. Um, helps spread the word because there are people locally who who are getting my TikToks. Because people all across the United States are engaging with them. Then they're connecting with my campaign on social media, they're finding out about events and resources for them in our city, so keep propelling my message. Um, so that I can service my community. Um, donate to my campaign if you have the means. If you don't, I respect that. It's free to like and subscribe and follow and all of that jazz, so please help me any way you can.
I love that. Thank you so much. Um, and just a reminder, folks, big money in politics has absolutely ruined our country. We are no longer interested in politics that is only serving the corporations. We want candidates just like Riley who are not funded by AIPAC and other special interests. Does AIPAC get involved in city council seats?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Um, we want candidates who are going to be serving the people who care about the people. But that money has to come from somewhere, so whether it's a dollar here, five dollars for a cup of coffee. Buy Riley a cup of coffee. She would really, really appreciate it, whether it's your wallet or your time. Make sure you're doing everything in your power to help these grassroots candidates, even following and sharing their content, just like Riley said, gets more eyes on them. And pushes their message across the interwebs and you can do that for free. Um, the time for change is right now and we have to work together, so um I hope that pretty much sums it up, Riley.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much for your support on this.
Amazing. This has been so awesome. I would be absolutely remiss if I did not send a special thank you out to my incredible mods. Um, our incredible design genie Kayla, Tabitha, Missy, any other content creators that are in the chat, please say hello. Caress, please say hello. Um, everybody go in there, follow these guys. They are incredible. Um, and also make sure that you are still registered to vote. And keep an eye on your local elections in your area because they're doing some hanky stuff in some places, not in all places, but. They're doing some hanky stuff and you just wanna make sure that when you arrive to vote, you are able to do so. You can do that by going to vote.gov to check it out. Riley, can you remind me when your election is taking place?
Uh, election day is November fourth, so we'll find out November fifth or sixth if I if I get elected. I'm very.
Oh, please, please keep us posted, okay?
Oh, I will.
Yes. This was incredibly inspiring and I know we have a whole lot of people who are super scared right now, but I wanna remind everyone that the fear is the point. Fear leads to panic. Panic leads to inaction, but hope and community are the antidote for all of it. Tune in Friday when we have an amazing candidate from right here in Texas who's gonna come and talk to us about what inspired him to run. Um, he's going to be fantastic. Um, be sure to follow us on uh the Substack. On Apple and Spotify and all the places where you find your podcasts, TubeOfYou also. Um, and join the peoplesickday.com to throw a wrench in this bish. I said bish, we love the TikTok shop. It's about time for TBH, Tab. If you're still here, say hello. If everybody could go follow Tab because her next, her show is coming up next. Um, thank you all so much for joining us, Riley. Thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you for having me. This is awesome.
I appreciate you guys. Of course, I cannot wait to have you back and actually, I wanna have you back after the election so we can talk about. Like, what the outcome was, what went right, what went wrong, what went right, how you got elected. All of the things. Yes, let's do it. It's gonna be amazing. Alright, thank you so much, everybody, and um TBH is next. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you so much.